Seven o'clock, welcome everyone. Before we call meeting order, I know we've got a couple of subjects on the agenda tonight that are naturally going to draw some good conversation, a lot of community interest. I just want to make sure with the setting that remind everyone in the meeting, if you're on the agenda, there's definitely an opportunity to speak and ask questions. If we're not on the agenda, I would ask anyone if you have a question or concern or a point you want to follow up on, take due notes, after the meeting will be available for all Q and A. I don't want to be disrespectful during the meeting if someone starts to have a question or opinion because there's a lot of interesting stuff on the bond and the financing piece of it, but we want to avoid getting into a lot of audience participation and that type of thing as we go through the agenda. So I wanted to just mention that before we get started. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
What's that? On 22-17, personnel actions as needed. In new hires, for summer hires, I didn't have Todd Krause doing summer band, which started today, so we probably need to approve so that he can get paid for what he started today. And that's at the same rate that we pay other summer school at $25 an hour.
Great. Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion for approval of agenda. Dave? Okay. Motion. And a second from Joe, all in favor? All right, Darrell, take us through payment of claims.
So we have two sets of payment of claims because it's that time of year. They're sitting there at your seat. The first one in the top right-hand corner that I'm going to talk about says 2020, '21, end of the year bills. So this really goes back to June 30th for the most part, finishing out the fiscal year. A couple that I'd point out, you'll see that on, and I'm using the front page, so number two and number 12, it's Kenneth Sedback and Yelheini Hockey. We're doing some work at the school converting some office space from a conference room at the elementary school, which relates to topics later of not having enough space. But that's work that they did in that. And then number three for Michael Sedback, that's two months of rent on the special ed office, and that's why that's higher than normal. So that's times two. The rest of the ones on there, then the other one I would talk about is in line number 24 on that page. It's a check 25111 to the Niemont Central High School activity account. Due to all the restrictions last year due to COVID, athletics did not have the ability to collect gate like it usually does, which most of our athletics are pretty self-funding. But because of the restrictions, it was not self-funding. So that $6,000 is to help them cover the loss of gate receipts and get them back to where they can start this year and start gathering gate receipts again. So remember that that pays for things like officials and all those types of things that go with having activities. So that's the only one I have on 2020. That'll close out fiscal year '21. Answer any questions on that one before I go to the next one, which is actually the start of fiscal year '22 and the July bills. Again, pretty low, which is not unusual for this time of year. You know, we do a lot of our spring recs and all that earlier, as you know. But I don't know of any that stand out to me that aren't common.
What's the pure zone?
Pure zone, we buy like janitorial supplies from. It's one of our vendors. Probably the big one that's on there that, so that's getting a year's worth of supplies. That's why it's large. The other large one on there is the student assurances services, which is line number 26 at $10,958. You approved that already. That's just, that's insurance for our students during the school year. So those are the ones I have. And again, I'll answer questions if anyone has any.
Make a motion to approve the payment of claims presented.
Got a motion from John, second from Owen. All in favor? Okay. We'll move on then. A lot of items in the consent agenda, our annual, a lot of annual items that are in here. We've added Todd Krause prior to the meeting. So unless there are questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Do you approve the consent agenda as amended?
Got a motion from Amy Herter. Second from Joe Wright. All in favor? Okay. All right. We will move on to 22-19.
This is again one of those annual events where we have some committees that are standing committees. I did get smart this year and I put in parentheses who is currently holding those positions because that's always the question, only a couple of them especially. So those names, those board members that are in parentheses after each one, that's who's holding it now. I would tell you that and not to, you know, try to offend Mr. Clements, but since he's going off the board after the November election, you might want to look at somebody being different for that one unless he wants to do it through January, which will get you through the convention, which is actually early this year. It's in the beginning of November instead of the end of November. But you're all right with that?
Yeah.
That's really what that job does a lot of. And then after January, we can appoint somebody else. You can, I mean, everybody can see where they're listed. Some of those meet a little more often than others, but...
Is there anyone currently on these committees that has a compelling reason to not continue? If not, I would propose leaving it stand as is unless there's a concern.
That's the beauty of appointments. You actually have the ability to do that with a motion.
I'll second. Okay. I'll make the motion. Will you leave committee?
Oh, sorry, I jumped ahead.
No, that's all right. But I guess all, is there any concern with any of that? Anybody? All right, well, a motion with a second from Owen and then all in favor? All right, very good. Welcome back. Do you have an apartment here yet?
No.
Been here?
I was here Friday and here today.
Do I do another one?
Nope.
Go ahead, Zach.
Okay. So tonight, I'm just here kind of updating as we've looked at this and continued to review this and we've reached out to contractors typically do and just looking, talking about costs. Tonight, I'm here to kind of update on, provide some update on some costs generally or not generally, but the scope has stayed the same as we've discussed and as we talked last time in terms of the pre-K addition down on the south end, the parking and site reconfiguration, the high school renovation in the science areas, the classrooms, addition of new classrooms, addition of new office area, new gym, renovation of the locker rooms, addition of a wrestling room, renovation of the secondary gym, into the theater, and then renovation of the tech building there and associated site work with that gym. We're hunting into the parking lot quite a bit. So reconfiguring of that parking lot as well as capturing some additional parking out front as well. So the scope really hasn't changed any. What we've done since last meeting, and we've talked with a couple contractors that we work with in Jamaica, also reached out, Lewis and I reached out to Jay at AHRS just to kind of vet numbers, vet costs where they're seeing things fall. I am coming today. The costs showing an increase over what we looked at last time. It's really based on looking at today's current construction pricing and trying to forecast where we're estimate where we're going to be at in two years, let's go forward with law and then into the construction time, just trying to forecast where we're, where those costs would be at over the next two years, trying not to be bitter at this point. So there's been some fluctuations in costs. We've also given, on this spreadsheet has a much larger breakdown of before, I just had kind of all renovation lumped together and all new construction at the high school lumped together for, just to kind of understand the different components of it. We started, or we've broken those down into, into four categories. So we'll say that a lot of the, as you know, a lot of the high school stuff is sort of a domino effect of you do, you do one thing, you do certain things and you have to do the other, like the gym and the conversions of the theater. Those are kind of a domino effect. If you don't do this, you don't do this. And the rest of it, you could, those are really probably the two bigger things that if you weren't to do one of, or they really have to go hand in hand. The rest of them hit on the renovation of the spaces that we've talked about and then the addition of the new classroom space that we've talked about as well.
Zach, can you talk a little bit about the mechanical and electrical, that last item there and get a little, I mean, it's well put out there, but remind people that HVAC includes new HVAC, as in we have two large spaces that are on the air-conditioned.
Yeah, so that really looks at, and it's primarily at the high school, looks at, the engineer did a kind of an analysis and I shared that at the last meeting, looking at really anything that was in the fair to poor range. A lot of it is just, it's at its life expectancy or and needs to be replaced. The other piece of it was places that don't have air-conditioning, like the gyms and the kitchen. Those units were also in kind of that fair to poor category. And so when we do upgrade those, we'll put air-conditioning in those spaces as well. But it really looks at, there was a few pieces that have recently been replaced in the high school or within the last five years that wouldn't be replaced, but it's everything that is in either aging, just at its end of life, needing to be replaced, really in that next, kind of immediate to next five years, looking at what needs to be replaced there. And so that was primarily, the mechanical stuff was primarily at the high school there. At the elementary school, there are costs in there to go through and upgrade, or I'll stick with the high school for a minute. That is also, there is cost in there to add a fire sprinkler to the high school. When we look at the additions, based on new codes, the, these new areas would be required to have a fire sprinkler as well as the theater because of the occupancy, would be required to have a fire sprinkler. So we have, as those costs are built into the construction costs, we've got additional costs included in this that go in and add fire sprinkler to the remainder of the building, knowing that you're going to have this area covered and this area covered, and there's not a lot additional space to, it makes sense and also allows you to be a little more, gives you more freedoms on how you build stuff inside the building when you do have a fire sprinkler system in there. This building has a sprinkler and obviously that new addition would be sprinkled as well. There are, within these costs, there are costs to go in and upgrade the lighting to LED in the elementary middle school building as an item that was identified by the engineer. That's probably one on the lower end of things that if you wanted to back that out, that's something that wouldn't, that's what wouldn't need to happen with your lighting. It's currently, it's a, it's as new as that building is and that's in many cases newer than a lot of schools have, so. That's kind of, there's some additional kind of electrical, you know, kind of at the high school along the same lines as what the HVAC, some of the electrical circuitry components that are panels that are original to the building would go in and replace that equipment so that it's updated. It's at current, I know there was some, some kind of code issues identified with the way the electrical service was in this building, the tech building, and how it built on itself as that building was, was, so within those, those costs, the mechanical, electrical include, include correcting some of those electrical items as well.
Refresh my memory, Darrell, I don't remember how we've got this potentially proposed, but from a cost standpoint, you know, as recent as this weekend, I talked with an owner of one of the local lumber yards and, you know, it's just one component, but lumber prices, he verified what I had heard, which in recent weeks have gone down as much as 40%. Obviously, there's more than lumber that goes into a project like this, but should we see downturn in building prices and demand and things such as that prior to the start of this? Refresh my memory on how cost estimates then translate to, you know, if we see significant changes in the market. You know, like today, if you had built a house and just finished it a couple of weeks ago, it'd be pretty frustrating right now to see lumber prices doing what they're doing. So as it relates to a broader scope like this, I don't remember how we're set up for actual cost versus...
Yeah, when the resolutions pass, you're going to say this amount. Well, we're asking for the bond to be this amount and that's what people vote on. So if it's 35, 35 million or whatever it would be, and it comes under, that money sets in and has to be used for the same type of things that are listed in your bond, so...
Doesn't mean that we necessarily spend it here, but it would be, so if this 35.5, the number that's on the sheet tonight, if we end up passing this and we spend 28, 27 million, balance of that money that's not spent, then...
Can you pay the bond down?
Yep. We can answer that. And there's a couple of ways to consider it, although some danger there. Oftentimes, because interest rates are so low, if the bond issue would pass in, I'm saying November, we would prepare a preliminary official statement, get a rating, and sell the bonds, all the bonds, in probably December to take advantage of low interest rates. Now, you've got a good point. If, if you think maybe we've got more contingency than we need, we don't have to sell all the bonds. We don't, we don't ever have to sell all the bonds if rates came down. And so if that's the case, we might save a portion of the bonds and plan to sell those later. Now, that exposes us to interest rate risk a little bit. But if you sell all the bonds, you are required to expend those monies within three years of borrowing. One way to spend the monies is to transfer it into debt service, okay? Once it's in debt service, can't pull it out and do anything else with it. And you cannot use the monies to pay for any other projects than what's in the ballot language. Now, we can put some additional language, generic language in the ballot language, give you total flexibility to do other things if you wanted to. But bonds are usually sold, the buyers of these are insurance companies, wealthy individuals, bond funds. They want call protection. And so usually we can do six or seven-year calls, but you can't retire bonds early until that point in time. You've got a contract to pay interest until that point in time.
And there's probably, I guess, a couple of questions in this. You know, one I think is what you're describing, the financing piece of it. For me, a little bit of it is, just as I think about the general public and, you know, I don't know that I'm different than a lot of folks, but you've seen a lot of inflation kicking in relatively quickly. I think there's some debate or questions around, is that here to stay? Does that maybe slide back at some point? With what we're seeing in lumber, just as a recent example, what I'm concerned about is we get into this and it's, you know, something we haven't done for 50 years and we do it and then we're, three or four months later, we've seen some pretty significant dial back in pricing. You know, at what point are we past the point of no return in terms of the scope and the costs that we've agreed to? What I'm not looking for is several million dollars to transfer out of the district into contractor's hands, just because the market conditions change quickly, is what's in the back of my mind. So how do we make sure we protect ourselves in somewhat unprecedented times from that?
I think that also, that ties what Steve said is a big, you've got those options. But the other option that you have is how you handle it. You can do, you know, construction at-risk management, which then, you know, that's different than, you know, design. There is, you know, having a contractor who will just collect that $35 million and, you know, if they save money, they save money and make more profit, whereas you go with the construction management.
At what point in the process will that decision be in front of us?
I think that after you make the resolution, you're going to want to start the process of hiring whichever way you're going to go, which, you know, I would just tell you right now, the best way to go is construction management.
And that, they would still, we would still, through that process, we would still develop documents and they would bid it out to their subcontractors and trade partners. And so if it's, like if I, looking at early childhood, if they, if this, if we piece this out here, this section out as a project, then we've got it estimated at 4.2. And if they bid it out and then say it comes in at 3.9, that's the cost you pay. You've secured that money in the bond, but you don't pay, you don't give the contractor $4.2 million.
So then that goes back to what Steve was saying, is you might not sell all the bonds at one time.
And so that would be part of kind of that strategy with the, and it's always a, it's a kind of a play between the contractor, when they need the money, but also what the market's saying and that do you sell all the bonds at once or do you do a staggered sale based on kind of when you, when you need them? Because you need money for design, but then you also need money for construction and those can be done in different staggered sales if that was appropriate, but right now it may make sense.
And the risk, as Steve said, was if you do stagger, then interest rates are susceptible to change.
Multiple sales expose you to the interest rate risk. There are cost divisions every time. You've got a new cell, all your driving, rating fees, etc. It's not huge in the scope of things, but there is some additional cost to doing multiple sales, you know, especially if it's three or four sales.
And along the lines, I guess, of where we've ended up kind of with the scope, you know, we had several different ideas and concepts I know that we've looked at. Refresh my memory, but did we land on kind of the least cost options as far as how we laid out what we had proposed here?
Yeah, I think some of the, some of the big pieces to that were attaching some of the components, being the gym and the preschool there, was pulling them off the building. And when you do that, you start to build in just that infrastructure cost of a standalone building, standalone facility that may have more, when they're attached, you've got a lot of space that can be shared between the facilities and that space is square footage that equates the dollars. So by bringing them into the facility, we're able to, like on this, we're able to cut out a lot of kind of that administrative, one of the kind of support space that you would, you would build into it if it was a standalone facility, but because it's part of this larger facility, we can cut out those, those components because there's, there's shared, shared value between, between those. Likewise, on the gym addition as well.
And if I remember right, renovating the career tech head building was cheaper than building new. Is that right?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, it is, what we're proposing is a significant renovation to it, so it would be...
Essentially gutted.
It would be, yeah, essentially gutted and rebuilt, reprogramming.
Zach, I'll hear from my assessment of 27, 35. Does most of that material cost increase? How much of it is artist items that came up for the review that weren't in before?
It's really, it's, it's really, we're, we estimate it right now, it's based on kind of a total square footage. So in some cases, we were able to, as, and Lewis worked on this, since he programmed this gym, we actually got the gym's square footage a little smaller because we reprogrammed it, or we, not reprogrammed it, but just got a little more into detail on that. But, but on the other side, we did see an increase in just that overall square foot cost. So it wasn't like there was something necessarily missing from it. It was just kind of revisiting based on what we've seen on some current projects that were either under construction or projects that were bidding and then talking to contractors about really where that market is, what those things are right now.
I guess there's more things like LED lighting breaks or things that came up that you got in more detail with, with other people, small items that maybe were missed earlier or...
Yeah, so the biggest, I mean, the scope is really, there's nothing really changed in the scope. There's, I think in this list, we've just provided more detail, kind of a greater breakdown. Before, we had kind of all renovation kind of lumped into one, one line item. And so this just gives it in greater detail.
So they, like 8.3 million increase on this was predominantly material increase?
Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's just looking at construction, construction costs and kind of revisiting that with our contractors a little more.
Starting with some theater representatives here, based on the size of that gym and making it into a theater, would there be enough seating and enough space?
I've had some people reach out concerned that that wouldn't be enough space. But taking from, like, we can fill the commons. We can fill the commons and not have enough seats. So whatever the seating is in the commons, and I think it's like, I'm not sure if this has to fire code, but we've got like 125 people in there at least per show. So I mean, anything better than we had, and it was like 350?
That's what I, my question I had was, I had 350. From the last time, I noticed the numbers quite a bit less. It's 150 to 250 in this description.
I think, and I know it does say on here 350, and I think it's, so some of this, some of the things that we talked about is whether that's more of an intertheater type setup, that 350 would be the maximum if you had kind of auditorium seats lined up.
A lot of weight to the stage.
As we, and kind of as I heard last time, that number of, somewhere in that 150 to 250 range, especially if we started to look at maybe something other than a just rows of seats in there is the kind of space that it would be.
Yeah, it's with the increased estimates and, you know, I'm not real excited about what best I'm doing if this building is hugely similar to ours, but I don't have a skill of this project. I mean, it's just better than a weight platform, but three or four years down the road, that crap is, this is a bit bigger.
The 350, that's 20. The 150 scares me.
But that's an intertheater type setting and that's...
Yeah, that's plenty big for an intertheater.
Yeah. So I think that it sounds like maybe that, I mean, that if we're in that, closer to that 250 range, that that would be more ideal. I think it just comes down to how we program that space in terms of understanding what, you know, and we'll work through different scenarios that we'll look at, here's a seating, here's how you would build it, and a seating for more of a dinner theater and the capacities that that could give. Maybe there's a blend that you get into to have some, I think it would be difficult to have tables and chairs set up and then transition it to lower seating. So you have to, as to the programming, you have to decide kind of what was the best mix if there was something, then, then either all dinner seating or all... If there was something, then either all dinner seating or all, all rows seating.
As far as the seating goes there, you really want to, if you're going to be using the theater, you don't want to make it for just one or two use, you want to be able to put the whole high school in there. If you're going to have an assembly or something, if you want enough seating for the whole high school, I think.
So those are, I think those are all kind of, in this concept, we have the box to work within. And then it's how do we maximize what your, you guys' program desires are with the seating in there? And what is that, you know, to your point of being able to have new testing in there or larger lectures or assemblies, those kind of things where you might have tablet arms on the chairs. That's possible, that's more of a, more of the row seating setup versus a dinner theater. So that's, those are things that we would work through as, as programming.
At this stage, the question is, is the box big enough, I mean, no matter what's in it, right?
Yeah.
Similar to a lot of people, but similar questions as well, would that be big enough? Should the theater be something else? And of course, substantial increases in the standalone buildings. Just want to make sure the box is big enough for it.
The other question I have is, in talking to contractors, do you see more risk of an upside in price increase or more of an awful downside?
I would like to, a lot of it's driven by demand of materials. And right now steel is in high demand, you can't get it for, we had a project, some of our projects down in Emporia, we were going with a steel hardaway system and they can't get them within a year. Can't get the hardways within a year. And so we had to switch to a structural, we had to switch to a structural steel system in that case. And so some of that, some of that drove, was driven then drove the cost. And there was a little slight increase in cost because we had to go to a different structural system. But I would like to think, and I think everybody that's, that's in the construction industry would like to think that we're maybe we hit a, hit a peak and it's, I don't think it's going to go back down to where it was a year ago. But I think that we'll, we'll start to, hopefully start to level off, if not go down a little bit. See some of the, I don't think we'll see across the board forty percent like we saw in lumber, but we saw a hundred and forty percent spike for more lumber over the last six, over the last year. So I think some of the models that if you look at kind of cost escalation of construction materials over the last five years, it's really five to ten years, it's really held pretty steady. And we haven't seen the escalation. Usually we would estimate in the three to four percent escalation per year for construction materials. And we haven't been seeing, had it was closer sometimes under three in terms of that, that cost escalation graph. And so it's where we're at today is if we would have continued that cost escalation of that three to four percent per year, we would have been where we're at today. In this case, it just went like that instead of a gradual line. One of the comments in talking to Jay at AFRS is the comment would be that we hope to make this up and beat this once these projects go out, go out to bid. There would be, if this passes in November, you would have a, you know, I think a sequencing could be starting on, you know, doing that first. And there might be a six to eight month timeframe for design as this whole piece gets started. If that is, say, ready to start construction, the kind of late, late summer or fall of twenty-two, this piece here, it would just be, and as we go for, as we go through that, through the design process, you know, kind of getting through the different phases is getting, certainly we get pretty hard numbers on what those costs are going to be so that we have to, if we have to make any adjustments as we finish out that design. So that when we, when we go to, when we go to kind of the final, final bid on that, we know that we've got all our costs covered and we're not going to borrow quite enough to keep from another, another portion of the project to, to sort of fund that portion. So, and these costs, these include the construction costs, but they also include for like classroom space, they include the technology costs and the furniture equipment costs to outfit those rooms. They have built-in escalation costs and contingencies in the net number as well as the design costs and the pre-construction, kind of construction testing, pre-construction testing and during construction testing costs are built into kind of that total, total project cost.
Other questions from the board about current scope? Second, go ahead.
The other thing is I got a, some of, I've been hitting, getting a lot of comments about a lot of the cost of this. You know, it's throwing thirty million at a, at a bond issue, I think it's going to be a tough sell. So I think we really need to figure out what's really needed and what's not. It's a very large project and it's going to be very expensive. And the costs are scaring people.
I think we all want to get to a point that is, that is powerful and why the community and itself. That's, that's our goal as well as your goal to get to something that this is a one-time thing and then move on to the next design and construction.
Other comments?
Darrell, may I ask you a question? Zach, can I ask, what kind of a contingency figure do you have in your figures? Five, ten percent?
Ten percent.
Ten percent?
Yeah.
Which is three and a half million though?
Yeah. And so that contingency is, is used in two parts. It's used through, through the design process to kind of flush out additional scope that's not understood at this, not necessarily additional scope, but additional detail that's not understood at this kind of altitude that we're at. And then that carries then the other five percent contingency into construction. So that, especially as we're going into renovating and for unforeseen conditions and things that come up during construction that need to be addressed again so that we, we have money there that's set aside for that so that you're not borrowing from sort of the next project in the, in the queue to shore up maybe a unforeseen condition or something that wasn't as you go with to kind of tie in to say the front of the building or tie in down here as things that are, or give you an example, again, in Emporia, we're in the art room. We're, scope of work was to do this to renovate the rooms and do some plumbing work. When they ended up scoping the sewer lines, they realized that the metals department had been running acid through those lines for the last fifty years. And so the sewer lines that ran through the building were completely corroded. And so we were, we had to kind of stop the project and figure out a new, whether they dig up the commons and put a new sewer line in or they, in this case, they routed outside the building and did a tie-in on the sewer line. And so that was, that was what those contingency funds were set there for, to address things like that that come up. Again, if you get through, through projects and you have contingency left over, that can start to get cut loose for added scope. Or could be added scope or other, other expenses as appropriate to the bond question.
Darrell, do you mind if I, do you mind if I throw a question in about the other part?
Click to Jason.
Jason, just, yeah, just, it'd be real quick, you should be able to touch on it, I think. So coming from a school that had an auditorium over in Houghton, is acoustic lighting, is this like going to be, are we going to have this all set up? Is it a full-on theater then?
Yeah.
Is that all figured into your?
Yeah, yeah.
I just felt that's real important, so.
Yep, so we would have, we would have, there's, there's really kind of two consultants that we work with a lot for acoustics and as well as theater consultants. And so they would be, that would be built in, that's built into the design costs as well as the construction costs.
Stage size large enough potentially for band and music concert?
We'd have to, that's, that's part of the, the programming that we need.
Sure, just wanted to raise a question, thank you.
But yeah, it's, it's more than a gym with tiered seating at one end of it.
Other questions for Zach specifically? We'll move into financing discussion next, but in terms of scope of the project, I feel like you've got it laid out well. Like, if we see what the numbers are, will we hack them or not? You're the messenger, so don't take that personal.
And we'll, we'll stick around, so if there's questions that come up after, after Steve's presentation too.
So no action needed on this agenda item, we're free to move into.
Yep, you go.
All right, we'll move on then to twenty-two dash twenty-one and finance.
Good evening, Mr. President.
Good evening.
Numbers of the.
Thanks for making the drive, a lot better than Zoom. I think the last time we had you, we had some technical difficulties or we couldn't hear very good or what it was.
Combination of all.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was here before, Steve Shilberin, managing director of the Public Finance Office of, Steve in Wichita. Partner Brett Shilberin is here. As always, I couldn't say it last time, but easy questions I'll answer, tough questions addressing the brain, okay? We're glad to be here, pleasure. Have rerun numbers and taken into that. Also, just, I think, Mr. Coleman, a lot of us could do this on the other side of your pamphlet. We've had Gilmore and Bell prepare a resolution to give you an idea of what that might look like as far as ballot language, et cetera. Zach had input on what that ballot language, what he'd suggested look like. And so it can be tweaked, it can be modified, you know, I always think we want to have the ballot language, which a lot of voters will depend on, and when they make a decision, we want that language to be accurate. We try to keep it generic so we don't tie your hands. But we could get really generic and do something as simple as make additions to and make renovations and upgrades for district buildings. I've seen that language and I think it's too generic. I think voters want more description of what you're going to plan to do with the money. Looking at financing, it's a great time to consider needed capital improvements and bond issues. Primarily, interest rates are really low, really low, and have been for the last year and continue really low. Only time lower was probably about a year ago this time, August of last year, they were slightly lower than they are now. And so it's a good time financing. I've prepared schedules with five options here to give you some ideas of comparing apples and oranges, so to speak. Option A, at Darrell's request, a project fund of twenty-seven and a quarter million. The bond issue size would be twenty-eight, twenty-eight five, twenty-seven and a quarter are the numbers that Zach has referred to. Construction numbers, architectural, et cetera. The difference, the additional monies are what we call cost of issuance monies. Advisory fees, bond council fees, rating agency fees, paying agent fees, bond printing fees, use of bureau fees for identification numbers, et cetera. And the biggest thing is what we call capitalized interest. Because the timing to get any monies from taxes in twenty-two, you have to certify by end of August that you have a bond issue approved, and we can't do that. And so to, to provide interest in twenty-two, which the market demands, we have to borrow that. We call it capitalized interest and it's part of the project sizing to have enough money to pay interest in the first year of the financing, okay? Anyway, twenty-seven and a quarter million, if you can downsize, I think, well, I heard this, I think this is the thirty-five point five million dollar plan. Twenty-five year finance, I've assumed two and three quarter percent interest. Today, I think we're closer to two and a quarter, but we are worried about interest rates probably going to go up before they go down in which one, okay? Based on that, a twenty-seven and a quarter project fund bond issue, the mill levy amortized over twenty-five years at two and three quarter percent, twelve point one six mills. You're familiar, I think, a mill is one dollar of tax on each one thousand dollars of assessed valuation property in the district. For example, a hundred thousand dollar home, homes are assessed at eleven and a half percent of their fair market value. So to the tax man, that home is an eleven thousand, five hundred dollar property. One dollar per thousand, move the decimal three places, eleven point five times our twelve point one six mills. And the impact of this would be additional taxes of about a hundred and forty dollars per year or about eleven dollars and sixty-five cents per month, all right? Now, and the bigger one, at Darrell's request, thirty-five million five with cost of issuance and capitalized interest. The bond issue size we recommend is thirty-six point seven two million. Over twenty-five years, fifteen point eight four mills. The math is the same, eleven point five times fifteen point eight four. That proposal, we'd be talking on a hundred thousand dollar home, additional tax about a hundred, one hundred and eighty-two dollars per year or fifteen dollars and eighteen cents per month. Now, just for interest purpose, and I give the example, you might find, you see bond issues we've done in Kansas in your portfolio, in fifteen, we worked with one of your neighbor districts, Marysville, twenty-six point four million. That was a significant investment for that community. Legally, we can borrow money and do thirty-year finance, okay? And I don't think it's a bad idea when interest rates are historically low levels that you consider them. If we do thirty-year finance and rates in the long end are pretty flat, so I use the same interest rate, I think it's conservative. Thirty-year finance, the same thirty-five point five million dollar bond issue, it drops the mill levy down to thirteen point five three. Drops the mill levy by over two mills.
How many years with Marysville's?
Marysville, we did thirty years for that exact reason at Marysville, okay? And so that dropped from one eighty-two, same bond issue, per month or per year to about a hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-four cents. Or from fifteen, eighteen per month to under thirteen dollars per month. Worth consideration. As financial advisors, when you can borrow near historically low interest rates, and I'm sure Zach builds buildings the last hundred years, Zach? I don't think there's anything wrong with financing long-term. And we will have a call option, so if your economy grows, you can pay off that debt sooner. But it's amortized initially over thirty years, now I wanted to give that, that option worth consideration. In full disclosure, longer you borrow, the more interest cost long-term. But most investor, or most patrons, taxpayers want to know how this will affect me immediately, what's the tax increase?
You know how much of a, pay a half percent of interest rate fluctuation one way will, how much will affect the rate? Too hard to figure out?
It is too hard to figure out. I, I think, you know, I'd be guessing, I don't want to do that, half a percent, not going to be. The biggest challenge is staying back to that principle. The interest rate a half a percent is going to have an impact, but I would almost say it's maybe one mill as far as, instead of maybe fifteen point eight four. as far as, instead of maybe, uh, fifteen point eight-four a half a percent, it might be fourteen eight point eight-four. That's my best guess. Please don't quote me on that. All right? We can run that, but maybe Brett can figure it out. That sounds like a tough question. I should have Brett answer it.
Well, my question is, you know, if we're, if we put this off for six months and have a special election in the spring, is if the interest rate goes up half, it was going to have that big of an effect? That's my question.
Yeah, that's a good question, very valid. I think our market thinks probably towards the end of twenty-two, we may see interest rates added up with inflation, with the economy picking up. Uh, I, I don't think many people think we can go much lower, although we had a dip lower this last two weeks, you know? The ten-year treasury, which a lot of bonds are priced off of, uh, a month ago was trading about one sixty-five, and today it's under one forty. So we've had a pretty good move in interest rates to the positive. Downward. When you're borrowers, to the positive, downward, to the investor, not so much. But I'd, I'd be afraid, I, I think I'd be irresponsible to tell you, yeah, wait six months and, and rates will be better. I don't think there's much.
I just mean it's, there is going to be a set increase.
I don't think so. I don't think so. That's, that's at least what smart people tell us in our marketplace. Now, you have a unique situation here in your school district that the old USD four-four-two uh, has outstanding debt. And when you merge districts, I think that's the proper term, you merge districts, um, the other district did not assume responsibility for that debt, and that's legalities. Uh, you are paying on that old debt, I'm going to say close to six mils. Five to six mils through two thousand and twenty-nine for another nine years. And so I ran some scenarios. This is an option. You may feel like it's more confusing than it's worth. But I wanted to at least give you that option, what we call the wrap financing. And B is the smaller issue, twenty-eight million, one sixty, still twenty-five years. One way we can structure the bond and the mill levy increase in that first eight years could be only eight mils until that other debt is paid off. And so, uh, and then it would jump up to approximately fourteen mils after that first eight-year period. Make it more affordable for all your taxpayers in the early part of the financing. The thirty-five point five million, same scenario. Uh, we could do a ten-mil increase for that first eight years, and then thereafter it jumped to eighteen and a half mils based on that two and three-quarter percent interest rate. Uh, it costs a little bit to do that, but we have tried to be very conservative in our estimate of assessed valuation growth. Uh, continued assessed valuation growth may offset that and bring it back down, uh, by the time we hit that additional increase. That's not additional tax thereafter. That means taxpayers would say on the smaller issue, a six-mil increase in two thousand and thirty. Or on the larger issue, an increase of about eight and a half mils in two thousand and thirty, if you wanted to build that group to make it more affordable for your patrons, uh, in the initial part of the financing.
It looks like though, the, for the cost of the project, the wrap option, we'd actually pay more interest though than we would on the regular.
You would, because you're not paying debt down as quickly. That's absolutely true.
And the wrap option, is it accurate to say that taxpayers will pay differently depending upon where you live over the course of the project?
About eight mils would be to everybody in USD one fifteen, eight mils. Some are not paying anything now, and so it's an eight-mil increase. Some, it's going to be eight mils on top of the five to six mils.
My, my question is, what's important to me is that every taxpayer in this one-one-five pays the same amount for the duration of the bond. We can't have somebody just because where they live pays more than someone else.
They're not. This is, this is a mill levy to everybody in one fifteen.
Got it.
Now, whether you do the wrap and defer some principal beyond the twenty-nine.
Initially, when we talked rap, it had a different impact depending on where you live, then.
Yeah. I apologize for that.
No, that's okay. I, it's not a, this is a.
That was Brett's fault.
This is evolving. I'm not a finance guy, but foundationally, I got to know if, if that doesn't make a difference.
This is the same either way. This proposal, taxpayers throughout the district, both four-four-two, and the other is, was it four-sixty-one?
Fifty-one.
Four-fifty-one, they're paying the same for this project.
Got it.
Some, in, in one scenario, less in the early years, and then a little more in the later years. Not a huge significant difference because we're not deferring that much principal the longer, but it's the same to every taxpayer regardless of where they live in the district.
Got it.
And I think, you know, it, you know, the, the money, pretty soon we're getting into Patrick Mahomes type money here. If you need him to live in the district, they recruit him in here to, to, uh, buy a multi-million dollar mansion and help pay the debt, but, uh, it is a good time. Interest rates are, are very good. I provided to Daryl some mill levies in your area.
I'd shown those to him last, last month.
Okay. I think the average mill levy.
No, it's not, but I.
The average mill levy of districts that have debt in your areas, twelve mils for bond and interest. The smaller one is very, I would talk that. And we could do, we could do thirty years on the smaller issue and probably get that mill levy down to ten mils, which I think, uh, much more sale.
Refresh my memories, but from what I recall, our current mill levy is around forty-one.
Yes.
In total, and.
On the four-four-two side, and then it's six less than that on the four-one-four-five-one side.
But on four-four-two, or on the higher of the two, currently at forty-one.
That is correct.
The state average is in the fifties.
They're, they're very low compared to.
And if I remember right, even if this were to pass, and if you used, let's just use, um, the thirteen mils, you know, that puts us up in the low to mid-fifties for a mill levy. That would still be less, if I remember right, than what Marysville's mill levy is today.
That is correct. Don't ride out it.
And it would have us roughly at the state average in terms of mill leverage.
You would not be out of line.
There, there were, I, I didn't bring that list with me, but I think including Marysville, there were three or four districts that were levying eighteen mils plus in your area for bond and interest.
Keep in mind that we don't have a capital outlay mill levy in almost it. We're one of twelve districts in the state of Carolina, now eleven, because one of them went into it this year. We're one of eleven districts that don't assess the capital outlay mill levy. So that's why, that's one of the reasons why we're lower than most. You could go to eight mils in a capital outlay mill levy. That's the max.
Those are some talking points that I think are important as we come out of these sessions that we also, you know, aside, in addition to the thirty-five million, I think it also needs to be where we stand today, how we compare to the state, how do we compare to our neighbors? And right now, we compare very, very well, and what we're considering would by no means put us.
Put us, you don't want, that's, you don't want me number one.
Sure, and I guess my, yeah, my point is.
You don't want to be in the Erie School District.
We're not looking to consider a spending initiative that puts us out of bed with the rest of the state by any stretch.
Correct.
It's going to put us near the average.
Yes.
And here in USD four-four-two, it's a drop by six.
Yep, that's right. Or suit, because you can pay off.
Yeah, and, and with your.
I don't want to get into the logistics of that.
Coming down, it's near six, but I think by, by twenty-nine, it'll probably be under five mils to amortize that debt.
Any other piece from a sales point, you're talking people with mill levies, what have we not done in the last fifty years? To the building or to the mill levy? And look at our, look at our facility.
Those are really good points because I, I, you know, again, well, you got to look statewide and local and all of those things, and this does not, I, Jason's hammered really well that it does not put us completely out of line with what other districts do with a fifty-year-old building, which has done well for fifty years. But other than additions, we have not done much to that building. We've done some additions, obviously. And I think the other talking point is to remind people that we build a four-classroom addition without borrowing money, which doesn't happen very often.
So do you mind the timeframe again?
That's, you took the question out of my mouth, Jeff. Perfect.
So for us to take action for this to be on the November ballot, was, was that timeframe, what you gave?
Yeah, I was going to suggest if it's appropriate, we talk about timing. Uh, this is what we recommend. We think the process should be ninety to a hundred days. Early November, I think it's November second is the first Tuesday in November, and so we'd recommend that you be prepared, if you can, to adopt a resolution similar to the one prepared here that stipulates the projects and stipulates the not to exceed bond issue amount. And you adopt that by the first week in August. Then we would publish a notice required by the tenth of August. We would file a package with the State Department of Education with information about the proposal, history of your valuation of your mill levies, et cetera, requesting permission to put this on the ballot as well as requesting permission for state aid. Now, you don't get any state aid, but that may change in the future, so you want to get approval for state aid if it ever became available to you. We file that by August the fifteenth. Then they will, I think, put you on the state board of education agenda for their September meeting, mid-September. They will approve it. This is not unreasonable. I have no doubt they will approve it. I don't think there's anything here that is considered athletics like track or football field improvements. And so you don't have any question there as far as state aid. They sometimes disallow state aid for non-traditional educational purposes. I think you get approval by mid-September. That would be adequate time for us to instruct the county election officer to publish the notices of election, which are two consecutive weeks, at least twenty-one days before the election. Most importantly, that gives us time to hopefully organize, uh, a campaign committee. We, more often than not, we call it the kids committee, keep improving district schools, and we try to help them, uh, understand what's been done in other communities to achieve success on these type of proposals. And, uh, give them time, hopefully sixty days, to educate the public about your challenges, proposed solutions, bond issue cost, et cetera. And so that's, there's a ninety-day timeline in there for filing, uh, to meet regulatory requirements, and most importantly, to organize and, uh, develop an informational campaign to give your voters enough information to be comfortable with how they vote. Well, you, you probably have a board meeting August the ninth?
Yeah.
That's too late in my opinion. I, I'd really recommend, that puts you, that'll put you maybe a month back, and that really makes the timetable tight, and that's why I recommend a special meeting.
It would take a special, we, we could do some other things in that meeting too, with our budget.
I'm, I'm of the opinion that we don't need to rush this. We try rushing this, but we, we rush this down to public right now, it's a bad idea. I think the longer you go to get, make sure we get everything right. You know, you got to put out a special election for the cost of ten, ten thousand dollars, whatever. It's not, for a thirty million dollar project, that's not a significant amount of money. So I don't, I'm not comfortable pushing forward with this by all, by all in the ballot.
I don't think we're taking any votes tonight or any action.
I'm just, that's my opinion, I, uh, reiterate what I've heard from the public. There's a lot of concern about rushing this through and decide and scope of.
What's the voter turnout look like on bond issues for November election versus special election, do you know?
I'm sorry, that's a question.
Voter turnout for special elections versus the November election on school bond issues?
It's, uh, it's higher for the general election with the publicity, et cetera. Success-wise, there's minimal differential between special and non-special. You're, you're right. You save some money by you piggyback the general election, you save that, I'd say at least ten thousand dollar cost of a special election by doing that. But, uh, there, there's no statistical information indicates one is more advantageous than the other. We like special elections because we can focus the committee on just that date, and we don't have other goofy yard signs up. We don't have national elections, we're throwing a bunch of mud and slamming and those type of things, but because the cost is more favorable, probably more elections are on the general election date than special elections.
Yeah, no, that's a fair point, John. I think that's, I thought it's gone through my head plenty as well, is just, as we continue to work through the hurdles of this and discuss it, like, uh, timing.
I, I wouldn't disagree with the gentleman. You have interest rate risk by delay. Uh, I think there's a better chance that interest rates might be up nine months from now. I don't know that. Could be better. Could be better.
And if there is a timeline where you can't have one, one is it, uh, from a general election to a special election?
You cannot have a special election within sixty days on either side of that November date. Uh, we've got Sedgwick Schools is voting August thirty-first. You get a special election done before they meet that time criteria. And you can only have one special election per calendar year. So you can, you can vote in the general. So in theory, you can have, God forbid, two elections in one year if, if one would fail. If one would fail with general or at a special election, you come back at the November circumstance, but no more than that, under current law.
And the other thing to consider, timing wise too, is whether the bond issues might be out there coming up on ballots too? Yeah, there's some other, other projects in the way, possibly, yeah. What's their timeline? Do we know?
There are, I, I should bring up another point. There is quite a bit of activity in the state. People like you talking about challenges, and there is a bond cap. That bond cap basically is relatively new legislation that restricts the number of bond issues can be voted and issued in a calendar year. The cap this year, I think, is about four hundred and sixty million. Last year, everything COVID played, everything, so we weren't even close. Uh, in previous years, it got fairly close to using that bond cap when it came about, but I don't anticipate it to be a problem in, well, not this year certainly. Twenty-two, I don't know, because we are, we are engaged by Sedgwick, um, we're engaged by Heston for a project. Uh, Mulvane is talking about a major project comparatively. Uh, we are hired at Twin Valley. We are hired, we're all squared with this.
Lauren, Claudia, Wabunzi, and Solomon, and they're all looking at.
The ones you worry about are the Johnson County districts.
I talked to Craig.
You know, that can do two hundred million without taxes. And they are limited, if a, if an issue is more than one seventy-five, they're limited to counting against bond cap to one seventy-five. I think it is, so they can't take it over. But I can see a time in the future where the last Wichita bond issue is three hundred and seventy million. I can see a Johnson County or Wichita issue, it would take all the bond cap for a whole year. I'm not very worried about that now, but I feel like as your advisor, I need to make you aware of that, that, there may be a time when you want to vote an issue and you can't because the bond cap is all used up.
Yeah, I talked to Craig, new former deputy commissioner of finance at State Department. Just to kind of give him a heads up while we were talking about and asking some questions too, on, you know, and he, I asked him if he thought we would come up against the cap, and he said, not at this moment, but he said that's in twenty twenty-one. He can't, he couldn't tell me about twenty twenty-two yet because it's too early for people.
We're just seeing a lot of, uh, talking points, uh, I haven't seen the mega issues like in Johnson County, and I don't think Wichita's considering anything, but, uh, it could happen for those Johnson County districts.
And it bothers me that that cap's over there because we don't get any state aid, so we have no impact on. They did that so that the state controlled the amount of money they were paying out the state aid, but they're gonna pay us out zero dollars, cause we don't.
It doesn't matter, you still have to.
We still have to improve. But even though it has no effect on why they took the law, you know?
Yeah. The law has some flaws.
Yes, they have a lot of flaws.
Especially in the districts under where we're staying, but you don't have that problem, we'll be talking about it.
Okay. Other questions about finance?
I had just one thing for you to consider. The people at the schools where they built the drill, the parents were not that happy with the end result and the way the taxes went up. So it is definitely, the parents over there, I just happened to work with them at the time, I've had a lot of people. They felt, they were told one thing, then the project went into toss over run. They did not get what they thought they were gonna get in the way of renovation. So they have one big nice gem with a walking track, and that's the way they do it, and they're not happy with the amounts of taxes going up.
Okay, thanks for sharing, yeah, I, our objective with this will certainly be anything about that, without a doubt. All right, we're ready for twenty-one dash twenty-two, my favorite subject.
Yeah, everybody loves this subject, so policy updates, you know, typically KSB does this in June and December, um, and then anytime in between those, if there's something that's really big. In attachment number twelve, I just gave you the, the general of what is being proposed. It's not very many, to be honest with you, especially when I, I'll hit a couple here where they're really the exact same. And, and they're just in different, different parts, so, um, so that, you know, I, I, I'm not gonna, you know, the, the first one is about budget with whistleblower protection, and you can kinda read through that, there were some changes, thank you. And, and so this is one that, I actually have the written-out policy, and it's in the Google Drive that I share with you all if you wanna read it, or I can send it to anybody who wants to spend their time reading board policy. We used to have a board member who loved that, looked forward to it, but she, she decided not to be on the board anymore. So that one is an easy one, it, it really just addresses some changes to state legislature laws and statutes. And it has to do with this whole idea of revenue-neutral rate, which you're gonna start hearing a lot about because it's changed how we do our budget. I can just tell you, while I'm talking about this, there, there isn't a district in the state of Kansas that is revenue-neutral. And, and they're all gonna have to go through the process because, remember that your largest mill levy is the general mill levy, which is twenty mills. That's, you don't have control of that, state legislature that sets that twenty mills. And if your assessed value goes up, and you have to assess twenty mills by law, you're automatically not revenue-neutral right there. Boom, done. Everybody is not revenue-neutral. Assess value in the state of Kansas, and our district went up, you're required to assess twenty mills. So you're gonna collect more money with that twenty mills because the assessed value went up. That's the definition of not being revenue-neutral. And so now you, uh, you have to go through the formalities. It's crazy in that the law was first presented, the, the bill was presented to not include school districts, cause everything that's in this bill was already being done by school districts. We have to have a budget hearing, we have to tell people what the mill levy was and what it's now, and why it went up and all that, we have to do it all. Now we have to do it twice. Not, I don't get it, when the Senate passed it and sent it to the House, it did not have this for schools, and then a couple of House members decided if it's good enough for all the other taxing entities, it's good enough for schools. And then the Senate concurred on it, and so now we're, where we're at, which is going to put a ton of work on our county clerk. Not this year, because they gave them a year off, but next year, they have to send out letters to every taxing entity that's not revenue-neutral. They have to send out letters telling the taxpayer that they're not revenue-neutral. And, and that's county, city, townships, water boards, if you've cemeteries, if you collect taxes, you've gotta fulfill it. And that's okay, I think there's nothing wrong with that, except for schools now get to do it twice. Because we already have it in place, but that, this is tied into that a little bit, but it's really about, like, you all know what a whistleblower protection is, if somebody sees something, they, they, they can say something. The next one is about food service management. This is just about when schools during COVID were remote, not our district, but other districts that were remote, they were doing food service remotely too. And even school districts that were in person when they had snow days, some districts felt like, well, we'll just have school that day. And, and we'll do it remotely because we have that ability to do. Well, you really couldn't do that by the way the law was written and policies were in place because you had to provide food service. And, and it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to tell a parent that it was bad enough that we can't have school, but hey, by the way, if you want a lunch, drive on in. Doesn't make a lot of sense, this addresses that where you can have remote sessions, we didn't do that, I wouldn't really consider doing that unless we were in a desperate where we needed the days. But you, you can now have a remote session because of weather and not provide food service. So that's the nutshell of that one. The next ones, uh, G A A C, sexual harassment, and G A A C A, racial and disability harassment. These are about employees, because remember the, the first letter tells you whether it's about employees, or if it's about students, or if it's about whoever, well, G is employees. And so you're gonna see this exact one then later on in the back page about students too, and it's gonna be J. But again, they're just coming in compliance with some federal changes to Title IX, and some other harassment changes at the federal level, so that's what that is. Uh, G A F is about student and staff relationships, and in the past, the KSB recommended to put in some things about bullying, but they're kinda pulling that back now, and they're really focusing more on inappropriate relationships between students and staff, and, and which is what that policy was originally about. There's enough other policy that deals with both bullying. I D A A is one that is, uh, the revision adds a reference to a policy, again, that was put into place, and now they're saying the A E B is related to I D A A, doesn't change anything. It just says that this policy is somewhat connected to this policy. J D D is suspension expulsion procedure, and this is a typographical error. In the original policy, they had I D A E instead of I D E A, which is Individual Disability Education Act, federal law. They just switched the two, um, uh, letters there, and so we've gotta correct that. So then I told you, you would see the same, uh, policy changes in, in students for sexual harassment and racial and disability harassment, that's what you're seeing. It, it starts with a J, that means it's related to students, same thing, same reasons. And then the last two, the, the second to the last one, D F A C is about procurement and federal programs. And so the feds increased the threshold from thirty-five hundred to ten thousand, and then from a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand, on when you have to start following federal, um, rules when you're bidding things out. You know, cause let's face it, at thirty-five hundred dollars, that, that's almost everything, you know, and, and they don't wanna get into everything, they wanna get into big projects. So that's why they raised those two amounts. And then the last one is they just revised some of the, uh, after the School Mental Health Advisory Council made some recommendations, state board about bullying, they changed that bullying policy and, and changed that. So there's nine revisions, um, there's two form revisions, and then the table of contents, there's three changes there, that's, that's all there is. In the past, this, the board has always had it presented one month and took action the next month. So that would be my recommendation on these.
Okay. That's what we're forced thus far, so, so no action needed?
No action needed, just answer questions, anybody has them, if anybody wants me to send you the documents and with the red out and all that, I can do that. It's in that Google Doc Drive that we, I've set up, but I can send it electronically or in hard copy if you want it. Good reading.
Questions for Darryl? All right, if not, we'll move on to twenty-two dash twenty-three and discuss unencumbered cash balance.
All right, so one of the other laws that's in effect is, uh, in the July meeting, we have to talk about unencumbered cash balance reports that we talked about in June, but now it's actually finalized, you paid the last of the bills for last fiscal year tonight, so we can report what it is. Again, if you turn back to attachment number thirteen, this shows you where the unencumbered cash balances are in, in the district. Again, you don't wanna have a lot of unencumbered cash balances in your general fund, because then they quit giving you state aid because they're like, you didn't use what we gave you, you must not need it, we'll give you less. So, but you can see in where, where we do have some ending balances, and, and, and the, the better one, I think, to look at, if you really wanna see it, is the next page, which really breaks it down, what you saw last month when we projected where we're gonna be with, uh, ending balances, total transfers into those funds that you can transfer into. We, we were projecting, if I remember right, it was over eight hundred thousand, it ended up being seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six, fifty-seven. And so that's, that's a good thing. Again, I think that shows fiscal responsibility, but remember that that's really just because we pay a lot of next year's bills in advance. So that money was transferred into this year's budget, but next spring, we'll spend it before we get to the end of the year, and then hopefully have some other transfers for fiscal year twenty-three. There always, this district has always been very responsible and fiscally conservative in trying to do that. And again, I, this ties into the whole mill levy discussion, but not having a capital outlay mill levy and having the amount of money that's in our capital outlay, as you can see, it's line sixteen there. Having, having that amount without having a capital outlay mill levy speaks volumes about this district. And again, we're one out of two hundred and eighty-six districts, we're one of the eleven districts that does not have a capital outlay mill levy. We've been able to do it other ways with, with, uh, the tax base that we have in our district, which our assessed value did go up, if you look at the, the, the general assessed value, there's different levels depending on things, but the general one went up to ninety-six million this year. And for two hundred and twenty-two square miles, that's a, let's just put it this way, there's a lot bigger districts that wish they had that much assessed value. But that, this is required by law, um, I do think you have to take action on it too, to approve those. Or maybe it is just a.
Didn't list any actions.
Yeah, now that I think about it, it's just, we have to show it to you, and be transparent with the general public that, you know, cause sometimes people's goes up, their transfer goes up, ours, you know, the, what we had recommended went down. But you gotta be honest with people, we're, we're transparent where, where it's at, so. That's where we're at fiscally. Because of the law changes, you know, a lot of times this year, this time of year, we would have the proposed budget for you to see, and then give us the authority to publish it. But because of some of the new changes in the laws, we can actually do that in the August board meeting and still meet all of the dates and times. So we'll have the proposal in the August ninth meeting, or if we have a special meeting, we can put it in that. Our, I can tell you that we're preliminary, we've worked on where we're at budget-wise for fiscal year twenty-two. Our mill levy will be virtually flat. There might be a slight increase, but it's like a point, less than point five or at point five. And that really is, a little bit of that is adjustment of how you round things off and how you do things, that's, but that'll be three years in a row that our assessed value has stayed at fourteen-something. And it might actually be four years, I, I just know for sure it's three years. Which again, when your assessed value goes up, you can do that kinda thing. But everybody in the state, I don't know of any district in the state of Kansas this year their assessed value went down. You can imagine with home prices of what they have been in selling that, that, that's had an impact on that. But that's my piece on the state right now, the financial of the district.
Any questions? Over. I don't have any either, Darryl, so thanks for the update on that, let's move on to wellness policies.
Our wellness policy didn't change from last year, but you are required by law to approve it every year. If you wanna peruse it, it's in this folder, and it hasn't changed any of this, again, is required that we, we, we don't do the high level where you can't have any unhealthy snacks, that's the next level that we would go up to if we're gonna make changes. We're at the, this is what you have to have required level, but.
The vending machine doesn't have the good options it used to when I was.
Yeah, yeah, and that's crazy, because honestly, some of it, that, that's one that, about five years ago, that's when that really, maybe even more than that, it's probably been a little longer than that, but, wait, wait, everybody blames Michelle Obama, she had nothing to do with it, she doesn't get a vote in Congress. Congress voted on the ag, the, the, the farm bill.
I didn't mean to open a can of worms.
No, but, but that, that changed, but it hasn't changed since then. That's the crazy part, is it has stayed consistent. In fact, they backed off a little bit on some of the sodium intake and things like that, so. They, it, it got a little bit on, a little controlling, especially for a farm country where kids are still working and not sitting around playing video games as much as other places maybe, so. Yep, I just need approval of it, so.
So we need a motion?
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the wellness policies as of current standing. Second from Dave, all in favor? All right. Executive session, you're thinking ten minutes?
Yeah, I would think we started that, it might go longer than that, depends on.
We start?
The part of it, I would like Carol in here, and then the other part, I would like just to be with me, so. But you don't have to do that, you can, we'll just ask her to leave.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna be going to executive session with Darryl Coleman and Carol Cookman, beginning at eight-thirty, for ten minutes to discuss negotiations for teachers pursuant to the exception for employer-employee negotiations under coma, and return to open session in this room at eight-forty. Can I get a second? Second from Joe, all in favor? All right. All right, we'll move on to item twenty-two dash twenty-six and discuss negotiated agreement and salaries.
So I will make a motion that we approve the negotiated agreement and pay increases as presented, with the exception of Darryl Coleman, our superintendent.
We have a motion, we have a second from Amy Sidbeck, all in favor? Very good. Move on then to twenty-two dash twenty-seven. Got a motion from Dave, second from Joe, all in favor? Thanks, everyone.